This agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time in a schedule. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. So I'll call this meeting to order. Ron, would you raise your voice for me?
The diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment's silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll move into Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Mike, we'll start with you.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Lamont?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Alicia?
Nothing to report.
Andy?
Nothing to report. May go this Friday.
Okay. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
I have nothing to report as well.
Okay. So we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda material are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing and copies are available for nominal charge. We have one, approval of our March 27, 2025 Agenda Notice; two, approval of February 27, 2025 Meeting Minutes; three, approval of March 13, 2025 Meeting Minutes; and four, approval of payroll change request. We're going to need a motion on one, two, and four.
We'll make the motion that we approve number one, approval of March 27, 2025 Agenda Notice; number two, approval of February 27, 2025 Meeting Minutes; and number four, approval of payroll change requests.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into item one for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills. We'll need to pull a check 227412 and check 227366. I'll take a motion on the remainder.
Motion to approve remaining bills as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we approve check number 227366. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Olive stained. That's for Frontier Coalition, which I work with.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve check 227412.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I've seen it's me to my client. All right, so, um... So we'll go and jump to item three. We have a public hearing but not till 9:15, so we have a little bit of time, so we'll jump to 1.3. Discussion, possible action on any items continued from the budget workshop agenda on March 26, 2025. So, okay, discussion. Anybody have anything more on that?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll jump to 1.4. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Planning Commission, which currently has two openings. Terms are from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028, and our applicant is Montserati G. Cruz.
I motion that we approve Montserati G. Cruz for the Planning Commission from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we'll open 1.5. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the site license agreement with Carson Valley Radio Club to install equipment for a ham radio repeater at the Austin Airport and to use electricity and internet at no cost to the club.
This is an item that we brought up before, and it's just to help the ham radio people.
So, does the commission have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, public have any questions on this item? All right. I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the site license agreement with Carson Valley Radio Club to install equipment for a ham radio repeater at the Austin Airport and to use electricity and internet at no cost to the club.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So I think we're gonna wait here a few minutes, guys, until 9:15, and then we'll open our public hearing, so we'll take just a five-minute break. All right, I'm going to open this public hearing for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the proposed ordinance number 2025-02, amending Chapter 9.16 of the Lander County Code, entitled Weapons Concerning the Prohibition of the Discharge of Firearms at Night in Section 9.16.010, and to hold and to add an additional exception to the list provided in Section 9.16.020 to allow the hunting of coyotes, bobcats, and badgers at night under certain conditions, including the use of night vision and thermal scopes, safe distance requirement, obtaining permission from property owner on private land, and compliance with all hunting regulations and other matters properly related thereto. Okay, so the public hearing is open, and we'll... If anybody has anything they'd like to say on the issue, please step forth and state your name for the record.
For the record, Paul Tamara from Tamara Ranches. I'd kind of like to set the stage for this by clearing up some things from our last meeting. I think some of our discussion was taken out of context. I think, Brian, you misspoke for me and Dan saying we were in favor of that, and we are not.
Well, I never said it.
I did.
I watched the video that you said Tamara's were hearing they're in favor of.
I said that.
Okay, all right, so that was misrepresented. When I started out my conversation the other day, I started out by saying I'm not 100% opposed to this disordinance, but I'm not in favor of it, and that is still my position. There is a... There's a lot of things that have been brought to me that has kind of swayed me to not be opposed to this. I've seen the thermal scopes. I've seen videos of the hunting and everything. So I just want it to be known that I would like to see status quo, the way things are right now. I don't think that needs to happen. You know, I think if it does get passed, there needs to be some teeth to this ordinance. And the one thing I would suggest is a two-mile from any occupied dwelling. Within a mile, that still has some possibility of a bullet traveling and striking residents, putting people in danger. I think two miles from an occupied dwelling and a mile from any structure. Dennis, during his conversation, Dennis Kors, he was worried about people shooting his pivots. And you get a mile away from a pivot, the chances of a structure, a tractor, a piece of equipment out in the field getting struck is really, really minimal. So I think those two things should be added to this, two miles from a residence, a mile from any structure. I've seen the night vision, and I've seen the thermal scopes. The thermal scopes are pretty effective. You can see things out there that if somebody shoots a piece of your equipment with a thermal scope or if they shoot a pivot, it's stupidity or on purpose, I think. The night vision is not nearly as effective. I would like to see that removed from this ordinance. And then I think there needs to be some way of enforcing this. I've had conversations with Ron Under, and he says, "My deputies are busy. They can't be out patrolling open range trying to find people out there misusing this." So I don't know how you can enforce this. I don't see it being enforceable to limiting the type of equipment they're using. People are going to be out there with their night vision or the thermal scopes, and there's no way to really enforce that. And Dow is very limited in their capabilities of being able to enforce this. So if we allow the nighttime hunting, it's going to open a can of worms that, right now, doesn't need to be opened. But by the same token, people are probably out there nighttime hunting as it is. So, but yeah, I would like to be on the record as saying I'm not in favor of it. I would like to see status quo. And, you know, I'm of the opinion, it was stated at the last meeting, that the public needs to be educated. I think a lot of people are smart enough to know that a gun is not a toy, and if misused, it can be dangerous. And I think the thoughts of people at nighttime packing guns is what probably swayed the vote to vote against this ordinance in the last election. I think the people are educated enough to know that that is the case, so that is my thoughts. And like I said, I just want to set the stage that it was misrepresented, taken out of context at our last meeting.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony, Paul. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
My name is Jacob Marble. I just wanted to provide just some context as me personally as a hunter, if that's okay. So typically what I do is I'll go ahead and I'll scout the area the day before, and I will use an app on my phone called OnX Hunt. It doesn't have 100% accuracy to show what property lines are, but me personally, I don't hunt next towards to anything that's close to any dwelling. I'll either take my Jeep, or I will hike up to the tallest mountain peak to where it plateaus, as far away from anyone as I possibly can. That way, if something does become stray, I know what's beyond my target, or I know what's on my target, what's beyond my target, and there's no chance I'm going to be able to hit anything other than what my intended target is. Again, this is just me personally. I cannot speak for everyone, but I will go scout out the day before. I will climb as far as I need to climb. I've climbed as tall as 3,000 feet to get to a destination. I'll then start at dusk, and I will sit there until dawn, and I will hunt all night long. Sometimes you get a lot, sometimes you get very little, but it completely eliminates the chance of me running into absolutely anyone. And I will go approximately about three miles out from that radius to make sure that there's someone not camping, or... I mean, it's very rare that I see anybody camping or doing, you know, hiking where I go. It's extremely far. So just wanted to provide some clarification, some context on that, that that's something that I personally do. So as far as people that may be too close to other people's properties, I can't speak on that, but me personally, it's a huge opportunity for me to get out, for my kids to get out, and for us to truly adventure into the mountains of what, you know, Lander County, what Nevada has to offer. 80% of Nevada is vacant BLM property. There's no other state in the United States that has that kind of opportunity. So I really would like to see this stay. I would like to be able to show my kids this. We make a lot of skins out of coyotes, you know, we make a lot of blankets when we donate those blankets. So being able to work with our hands above your head, and God we trust, I believe that God wants us to work with our hands and be able to give back, and I would really like for this to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to speak?
Good morning, guys. My name's Dennis Kors, Kors Farms. I was here last meeting, and I'm vehemently opposed to it for multiple reasons. I brought... Brian, you asked me some examples last time, and these are just regular hunters during daylight hours. Got a pickup on the highway, pulled off on the highway right away, shooting coyotes off of my field. I pulled up, they had a bed full of coyotes. Oh, well, we didn't know. I'm sorry. Off the highway right away. Our fences are marked, probably four signs per half-mile of no hunting, no trespassing. So it's not like, oh, wow, we can't see it. Another one, antelope season gut pile on the highway right away, and they drug it out of the field because they shot it in the field and gutted it right there and left the gut pile. I had to deal with the gut pile because I don't want a gut pile on my road. And these are all during daylight hours. Pickup drove a half-mile down a private road, through three gates, saying, "Oh, I was just trying to get to the BLM." Through... And the gates are well-marked, private road, no through traffic. They just... Nah, doesn't apply to me. Another one, side-by-side with a dead antelope in the back, killed off of the neighbor's place that doesn't allow hunting. Went through two gates, mile road, private road. I pulled up to talk to them, and they sped off with no regard, you know, because I wasn't being nice, because I'm done being nice with these guys. Like I said, I've got 10 examples, and I started being nice. "Hey, what you guys doing?" "Now?" "No." "Get... I'm the grumpy old man. Get off my lawn," you know. But it's just because, and on storms, they had guys working out in the morning, raking, they shot an antelope in their field with the people working in the field, then drove through the field, stomping down the hay, threw the antelope in the back of the car, and left. This ordinance isn't for the people that obey the law. It's you're going to allow so much more to the people that, "Oh, well, it's legal. We can do this." You know, let's see, another one, pickup pulled up on the pivot corner, and I pulled up to them and, "Hey, what you doing?" "Oh, I got... Shooting coyotes." "Okay, well, who'd you talk to?" "Oh, a guy in town gave us permission." "What?" You know, another one, pulled up, he was shooting coyotes, and I said, "Well, what you doing, bud?" And he did the same thing. He fled in a pickup, going down the county road. He didn't even want to stop, talk, and say, "Just what are you doing?" And I mean, he just put it in gear and high rate of speed down the highway. My kids play on the... I live next to the road. I mean, I'm a lot closer to a county road than you guys are for the yards. Let's see, dead coyote from my house, shot from the highway, less than 50 yards from my house. Like I said, gates are all clearly marked. Side-by-side, guy running down the power lines. "Hey, well, this is, you know, there's a dirt road here." "Well, that's... Yeah, the power company has access to it. You don't." Through multiple gates. Talked to Sean Merriluch this morning on my way in. He brought up a good example. He was... Let a guy shoot, shooting. Missed the target, it ricocheted. That happens. And it hit a riser. That happens in the middle of the night. That's going to make a mess. You ricochet, you hit one of my variable speed drives that control the pumps. They're $30,000, and I can't run into Battle Mountain and pick one up for a replacement. So I lost a crop, which is $150,000. I don't know anybody that can take a $150,000 hit. You know, and I've had hunters miss also during daylight hours and hit a riser. You know, so it's not, "Oh, well, that's a one-off." And talked to Jason Storm, he's opposed to it too. With me and him, just us combined, is 10,000 acres. And like I stated last time, 90% of the coyotes are not out in the BLM. They're in the fields, they're catching mice, they're... That's where the hunters are going to be. And again, it's not on the hunters that are obeying the laws. It's everyone else that is not. And you open that up, and I can't stop them. I live 50 miles, 40 miles out of town. I can't call Ron or the deputies and say, "Hey, this guy did this." He's gone by the time they're there, and I can't detain somebody for an hour. You know, my wife is like, "You know, hey, these guys are all armed. Just takes one crazy person." So it's just... The multiple farms out that way in ranches are opposed to it. And, you know, like I said, don't do good on talking, public speaking, but we are... Everybody out there is very, very opposed to it.
Okay, well, thank you for your testimony. I'd just like to respond, Dennis, is that thank you for the examples. A large majority of those examples were people who were breaking the law. They were being criminals.
Right, but...
I don't... So let me... I don't see how if we pass an ordinance allowing responsible citizens that are protected by their constitutional rights or Second Amendment... Let me finish. It's still not going to stop the people that you're having the problems with now. They're lawbreakers, they're criminals. They're going to continue to do it. The only person that would be penalized by not passing this ordinance would be the responsible individuals in this town.
Okay, for that one, I would say it's just... For every good hunter out there, there is an X number of bad ones. And I'm not going to give a number because I don't know the number. It's just allowing more people to hunt out there during different hours. And like I said, these are daylight hours when we're out and about. At night, I have no idea. And the responsible ones, yes, but it's the irresponsible ones that you're saying yes to also when you say you can night hunt. You're just not saying, "Now, are you obeying the law?" "Yes, okay, go hunt." Because you're saying yes to everybody to hunt. And the Second Amendment, yeah, but you also cannot discharge a firearm in town? Is that restrictions on your Second Amendment? There are laws that restrict, and this is one of them. And I feel it should stay the same because it's a major safety issue. The distance from a dwelling. You turn all the lights off of my house, you can't know where my house is. And yeah, coming out and scouting three a day before, but you guys know 90% of the hunters are not going to do that. 80%. A large portion of that is, are not going to do that. They're going to drive around in the middle of the night, and that... Like I said, the responsible hunters, they're fine. But you're just not saying yes to the responsible hunters. You're saying yes to everybody. And that's like Paul said, it's a can of worms that shouldn't be opened. 55.19% of the voters said no to night hunting. 44.8% said yes. So in my opinion, they know what... They know enough to pass. It wasn't a 55... Or it wasn't a 51.1250. It was a sizable difference. So I think that large majority, the voters do know what they're talking about. And I feel that you guys should stay with what the voters would like. So...
Okay. Well, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Anybody? Yes.
Hi, Bryce Green, for the record. Just want to start by saying thank you, Commissioners and Representatives, for addressing and discussing the issue at hand today. We appreciate it. I want to start by saying that I sympathize with the ranchers who hate dealing with stupid people. There are a lot of stupid people out there. But I will say that the proposed changes don't make trespassing legal, and they don't make shooting from the vehicle legal. They don't require landowners to give us permission to their property, and I agree that there should be a requirement for distance from private lands. I don't want to come off strong or too strong, but I would like to start by saying that the current legislation is clearly a Second Amendment infringement. Our founding fathers never included a clause saying that we only have the right to exercise our firearm freedoms during the day. The current legislation prohibits the discharge of a firearm at nighttime on public land, which makes a criminal of good men. Benjamin Franklin said, "He who trades freedom for safety deserves neither freedom nor safety." You see this room filled with passionate predator hunters and ranchers who'd like to protect the public lands that their cattle are grazing on, but the current legislation makes a criminal of the non-hunter too, who only has the time to maybe sight in his rifle during the night on public lands. But I am grateful that we are covering some ground with the currently proposed legislative change. I'm from Kingston, so far southern Lander County, and being such a small town, we always have coyotes, coyote issues, but we don't have any plots of private land large enough to hunt from near town. Coyote hunting is much easier at nighttime and more effective than day hunting, and you could even argue trapping. So with that said, I believe that Kingston would greatly benefit from being allowed to hunt coyotes at night. This is about more than just sport hunting. We are, with the current legislation, effectively protecting coyotes, a destructive species in Lander County. And like the gentleman earlier said, I don't like hunting even remotely near private property or ranches. Lander County is huge, and most predator hunters stay far from private property unless they have permission. And so we encourage you to allow us our freedoms back for the benefit of Lander County. As a note too, I also suggest that we add kitfox and grayfox to this proposed change. They're also predators, and they would fit well into the pre-existing list of coyotes and badgers and bobcats that we have. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else that would like to speak? All right, I'll turn over to the commission here for any questions.
Oh, we got one more?
Yes, yes, sir. Sorry.
Trying to make sure. George Forbush for the Better Predators Hunting Association. Not going to say anything much different than I said last time. I sent some of you guys a video showing the ability to do precision shooting with thermal at night to let you guys know that, you know, you aren't just shooting up the hillside to try and alleviate some of the concerns that the ranchers and maybe that some of you guys may have. And I sympathize with the ranchers. I know exactly what they're talking about. I own property out in Fallon, and I have a parcel out there where I have a creek that's full of water, and the ducks like coming into, and I get people that just cross my property and they want to jump shoot. You know, I don't know who they are, and that upsets me, and, you know, I get exactly what they're saying. And all these irresponsible hunters make the rest of us look bad. But it's clear to me that that's a violation of certain laws that are happening, whether they're trespassing or they're out there drinking while in possession of a firearm. You know, they're out there booty-bashing, and they're throwing beer cans out the windows while they're... Shouldn't be driving, let alone handling firearms. while they're, shouldn't be driving, let alone handling firearms. And, you know, it's a law enforcement issue. And you have such a vast amount of land that it's hard to catch those type of people and when you only have a workforce of deputies that's so small. But a byproduct that I thought of that maybe you guys haven't considered is, is if you have a bunch of responsible hunters out there at night, a lot of the criminal activity that happens is at night. And maybe, just maybe, there's a possibility that if you allow the night hunting and people are out there legally shooting coyotes or predators, whatnot, and they see other things out there because they have their thermal and their monoculars and stuff, and they see people out there that are illegally dumping or doing drug deals or, you know, have underage drinking parties up in the hills, but they'll be able, you're gonna have like a neighborhood watch program unofficially where they can then call the police and let the sheriff's office know, hey, we're out here hunting, but we're seeing some guys doing something that's questionable over here. You know, that's something to consider, that maybe you'll have that happen. I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of any byproduct here that you might get out of it. But, um, we support this. Uh, again, you have a bunch of guys that want to do things legally. That's why they're here to propose this change. The people that are going to do it illegally, it sounds like they're doing it anyway, whether it be day or night, you know, and that's obviously something that we can't fix here. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, anybody else have anything they'd like to say? All right, I'll turn it to the commission. Are there any questions, anything that would like to say or respond?
I have a comment. I was the one that said that Paul Tamira had, um, agreed with it. You didn't actually stand up there like you did today and say, I oppose this. You stood up there when everybody was testifying and saying, yes, we support this. Our first meeting, everybody in the room seemed like they supported it. There was not one person that actually said, no, we can't do this. So when we look at something like that, we're going, okay, so this community supports this, why wouldn't we support it? Now we have people that are coming up and saying, no, we don't want this and we have to respect your opinions also. But, you know, I mean, at that first meeting, it was strictly all support. And I don't know, it puts us in a really tough position to decide what we're going to do about it. But one way or another, they're going to be out there and they're going to be doing it and they are doing it. They're driving around and they're tearing up people's land and they're tearing up the government land and there's nothing we can do about it. But maybe if we put some rules in effect so that our sheriff's department does have some kind of leverage to arrest these people, it helps all the way around. Right now, you know, there's really, you can't shoot at night, well, you gotta catch them. But by having other people that are out there that could possibly help and report these things to the sheriff's department, it could go a long ways to helping to stop these people that shouldn't be out there in the first place. My opinion.
Thank you. Uh, question, counselor, is I see the violation, uh, so if there is a violation to this ordinance that was passed, it would constitute a misdemeanor, so, so if somebody was trespassing and they caused damage to a thirty thousand dollar piece of equipment, is still classified as a misdemeanor or would it be classified as a felony?
It might be a felony depending on the particular facts.
So, so if there is a chance that it could be charged a lot steeper than just a misdemeanor?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I, again, I...
If the facts were proper, I mean, every time there's an accident that causes thirty thousand dollars damage, doesn't make it a felony automatically. So it, it would all depend on the particular facts of a situation. But if you're doing something recklessly, it might very well go into felony territory.
Well, and that's my thing is that I sympathize with the ranchers as well because, I mean, if I were in their shoes and I owned the property and had some numbskull out there, they didn't ask me for permission, whereas they were on my property shooting and they caused damage to a thirty thousand dollar piece, I want retribution. I'd want that guy to really be charged because it's, it's reckless, it's, it's, it's willful, right? It's, it's, especially if there was an ordinance on the books where he could have come knocked on my door and said, hey, landowner, I'd like to hunt your coyotes, this is my name, this is where I'll be, uh, this is my equipment. But it's for those people that don't, that break the laws. It's, uh, I just want to make sure it's a, it's a, that the potential of having a more severe consequence for them, that, that's what I'm reading here, you know?
Well, it can be situations, but you shouldn't just automatically assume because the damage is tremendous. For instance, what if one landowner right next door to you, um, and you don't want anybody hunting at your place, they're hunting next door and they hit a pivot or something, um, on your land? That's not an occupied dwelling. That's just simple negligence. That's not, you know, recklessness. You're not going to be in felony territory unless you can somehow make out a claim they deliberately sabotaged your equipment. So, um, let's not get carried away, just because it does a lot of damage doesn't automatically mean it will be in felony territory.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Another question I have is, in the proposed ordinance, we have a distance of two thousand yards, which is a bit over a mile. With the testimony of Mr. Tamira, uh, he said he'd like to see a two mile distance from an occupied dwelling and a mile from any structure. Um, I just wanted the commission's thoughts on that. Um, because I know there's a lot of rifles that'll, that'll shoot a mile pretty easily. Two miles makes it a little bit more difficult, especially for the, you know, for an occupied dwelling. I mean, because if we were to pass the ordinance, safety is, is paramount as well. What do you guys feel about that?
Um, well, I have this concern too, um, about that distance that I asked when this first came out. So I, I do think it needs to be further away, um, just for safety.
Okay. So do you feel that the two mile for occupied dwelling is sufficient and then a mile from any structure unless it's occupied is, or do we want to see something different there?
Do we want to clarify structure as in like pivot lines and that or just leave it as an open generic term?
Well, I think a structure would probably classify as anything manmade. That's kind of my thought on it.
That could be water tank, it could be, uh, anything.
Yeah.
Bad house. Barn. Barn. So looking at it, like I said, I just kind of went off Google, looked at some stats. The two miles is, uh, like I said, Ryan, is, is, is a safer number. Um, with directory, because a lot of them are using long, I mean, from what it shows is a lot of long range ability, capability rifles, so. Two miles of the structure, I think, in my opinion, covers it a little more firmer versus one mile of one or one mile of the other, it's...
Okay. Um, and then this, the young man here, he said on the list of species, he'd like to see a certain couple foxes added to that because they're also as well as predators. I think that's the whole point at night is that you're eliminating predators. How, how do you guys feel about adding those couple species to...
So that would have been kit fox and gray fox?
Yep.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay. And this is only if we pass the ordinance.
Yes.
I'm not saying that we are, I'm just trying to get clarification so that if we do.
And permission is stated on it, prior explicit permission must be obtained. I mean, I don't think we could word that anymore straight.
So, Brian, I do have a question. So when that, we're doing that fifty-five percent of people voted, I'm just, just out of curiosity, how many registered voters voted then? And was it a question they were voting on or was it, because I don't remember?
So it was...
How many years ago?
It was an advisory question, wasn't it?
It was an advisory question, okay, I want to know.
We were asking, we were trying to get a feel for how they felt about it, but it's, there's, there's some sides to that and one of them is that people feel that people aren't really truly getting the facts, you know, they're just hearing like this is what it is, they make a determination. But basically, the bottom line is that was just something we did as a courtesy, we didn't have to do that.
Okay.
I mean, we are elected to be the voice of the people in Lander County. Um, and you bring up a good point too, it's, it's the registered voters that voted, how many people didn't vote, you know? So it's just, I mean, that's, that trust is installed in us to try to make those decisions to where we're protecting our citizens' safe, safety, their constitutional rights across the board. I mean, it's just, that's why we're here facing this tough decision today.
That had to have been at least four years ago, right?
It was, oh yeah, I think roughly, yeah.
Twenty twenty-two. Okay, things have changed a lot since then.
Um, sorry, are there any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, so even in, in three years, I mean, just, you know, looking at the, the material that, that George Forbush sent over and thank you for that. Um, I mean, that technology is incredible, but, you know, the, the thing is, is not everybody who's going to be out at night, you know, is using, utilizing that technology. And that, that's my concern is, you know, if, if something like this is passed, how do we enforce it? And if it's, if the law is being broken, how do we prosecute that? And that's, I, I do believe by one, so, one thing that'll help tremendously is getting more legal hunters out at night. Um, the communication's gonna, if something like this does pass, communication is vital. Uh, you know, and, and it's, that is, that is my biggest concern is, is safety. I mean, um, I think Jacob, you had said, uh, you know, you do go scouting areas and you, you, you do the, the due diligence, but, uh, conditions do change. Even they, they change within, you know, twenty-four hours, something can happen. So, um, I, 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 I see a good group of people here who, uh, who are, you know, they're doing all the right things, it's, 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 it's the other people that are, that are going to mess it up for everybody. And, uh, you know, my, my concern is, is, is this, is we do what we say we're going to do. Uh, you know, if there is a, uh, you know, I do like the, the utilizing technology for, for hunting, but how do we keep that enforceable? I do, you know, do, can we enforce that? If, if someone's fifty miles out, how do we, how do we deal with that in a timely manner? Because people are gone, you, you, you engage with them and then, and then they're gone. So, um, I do think communication is, is, is the way we succeed, getting good lawful hunters out there at night. It might help getting rid of some of the, the lawbreaking people, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ron Uger for the record. And, uh, Lamont, I'd like to answer some of those questions and, uh, just so the commission knows is, uh, a lot of what these gentlemen behind us have said is, is factual. These guys are great guys. But you get out there, like Dennis Corset, forty-five, fifty miles out, he makes a telephone call the sheriff's office. We respond to all calls of service, all right? So Dennis calls us out, says, hey, I got somebody out here shooting in my pivot, whatever the case, we're going to dispatch a deputy. Most of the time they can dispatch immediately, but if they're in the middle of a domestic or if they're in the middle of something here in town, they gotta wait. So in the middle of the night, we get out there, chances of us finding somebody is slim to none. We may catch them, we may not, it depends on the information. But like Lamont, like you're saying, these guys, if they are out there and they do see this, uh, and, and I, I'm involved in some of this through family members that are rabbit, coyote hunters, they've got the, uh, the fancy scopes and everything of that. But the question I can't answer, these guys may, is can they tell the color of the vehicle and the license plate number at a distance? And I don't know the answer to that. That's where it'd have to come here. But I guess the point we're trying to make is if law enforcement's called, we're going out there. But keep in mind, we would have to catch somebody for the DA to do any prosecution. And if they got the scopes like they got, and I've looked through them and so has Brian, they, they're going to see me coming. Them red and blue lights are going to be flashing and these guys, they're going to go up somewhere and get in the canyon, turn off their lights and we could hunt out there, we could look for them all night long and not find them. So I want you to keep that in mind, you know, uh, we do respond, we will do our due diligence to catch these guys. Um, and some of them are correct, you know, we got two individuals, two deputies on in the middle of the night and a supervisor. So the town people is our main deal to go out fifty miles, we're going to go. The chances of us getting somebody, the percentage is kind of low.
Okay, thank you. So back to commission, any other further questions from the board here? Okay, so I'll open up for a second round of testimony from the public. Anybody that wants to respond to our sheriff, uh, have anything else they'd like to add? Please come up to the front.
I just have a suggestion, George Forbush again. Um, I, I'm wondering if the sheriff's office has thermal, like monoculars or something like that?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, all right. Because that, obviously that would help and if you had, you know, I don't know how good it is, but if you had...
But that's what I'd like to explain. I think it started out years ago, we had the, uh, what's the cheap ones they talked about? We've got, we've got the expensive one out that you guys use, uh, and I try to keep them in certain patrol vehicles. So we do have some night vision, uh, thanks to the county commissioners, we're being able to increase what we got because they are so expensive. So we do have some, to answer your question, yes.
Okay, that's good. And, because some, it obviously as time goes on, they get better and the cost goes down. Like my monocular cost me fifteen hundred bucks, now it costs five hundred dollars, you know?
We've got both.
Okay. Which is horrible for me because now the resale, I'm not going to be able to sell that thing, like getting any of my money back. But the quality is there. And so I was just thinking that if you had that, because there's a lot of places, uh, like in police departments and urban areas that don't have it. And when you're doing yard searches for suspects and all that, that would be a good thing to have, but for you guys, obviously it would be, you know, would help. So when you have that car going up the canyon, you can see them just as well as they can see you if you have it out, is what, what my point is. So, um, but that was my point, if you had it, it just needs to be utilized to try to catch those guys that are trying to hide from you, so.
The deputies have them on, mainly the SWAT teams that flipped out, which everybody's seeing, I think it's the monocular, whatever it is. But we do have the monoculars, but they're not the three thousand dollars.
Okay, well, the, the more you can spend, the better. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
One thing I would like to point out is that this, this ordinance is much more stringent than our surrounding counties. I know that Humboldt County, they allow spotlighting, you know, no, no night vision at all and you can't see beyond your light and they, they have some, some more stringent, so just a comparable and I don't, I'm not aware of, of any major complaints. When I reached out, um, they didn't have anything that were, they'd had any, any issues that we could cite for you guys today. So that was something, some research that we did and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Uh, Daniel Goodland for the record. I just wanted to talk about enforcement for a second. Uh, you guys brought that up. It's going to be exactly the same as it is now, right? There's, there's no way to enforce the ordinance that we have now, uh, as far as a, um, it's going to continue to be a reactionary enforcement, right? If something does happen, that's when the police get involved and they would have to check your equipment, check your, make sure you're being safe. That's the only way to do it now is reactionary, you know, they, they get a call, they go out. There's no, uh, I guess, I don't know if it'd be precautionary or whatever, but, uh, so it's, nothing's going to change as far as that goes. The people that are doing it now, wrong, are still going to do it wrong later. I mean, what are we going to do to fix that? So it's just going to continue to be a reactionary deal. If you're out there doing it and you mess up, you're going to get caught. You know, he said they do have, they do have the equipment to see you. Um, people, other people are going to be out there as well seeing it. No, we can't give you the color of the vehicle because it's going to be either white or black. We can give you the make and model, possibly the year, and in some cases you can read the license plates with, with that equipment, you know? But from a distance, it's going to be like, you know, what's red versus orange at, at a two miles, you know what I mean? So it's just going to continue to be like it is now.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Any other, yes. We'll circle back and get you too.
Bryce Green for the record. I just want to add one really quick little thing too, um, in regards to this discussion. Pretty much every modern thermal also has a record functionality and I think that could be extremely useful to law enforcement, um, for the sort of hypothetical scenarios that we've been talking about. Um, I don't know of any modern thermals that do not have that. Um, and so there's been instances, you know, where I've been out in, you know, Nye County or other counties and I see something odd, you know, and so I record it and that sort of thing could be very beneficial to, um, law enforcement. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you.
Jake Morbell. Um, seems like we have a great culture behind us of great hunters. We obviously have a, a problem with the ranchers and the farmers. You know, different organizations like Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, different entities, uh, they utilize these different organizations for search and rescue and other efforts. I don't see why, either on a private level or maybe making some sort of entity... I don't see why, either on a private level, or maybe making some sort of entity off of the powers to be to here, to create a community of excellent hunters that will report these crimes, you know what I mean? I don't know what that looks like, but maybe being able to utilize these awesome people behind us could benefit in a law enforcement to be able to report these things. Again, I'm not quite sure, this is just off the top of my head, but if we can, if we can, you know, unionize good hunters, set the culture and the standard to push out these, these bad hunters that are giving the rest of us a bad rap, we're protecting the farmers, we're protecting the ranchers, and we're giving the sheriff's department the tools and resources and the ammo that they need to, to be able to prosecute these guys. So again, I don't know what that looks like. Maybe it might be, I come up with a Facebook page and, you know, talk to these guys afterwards, I'm not quite sure, but, you know, or like I said, it could be an entity that branches off of somewhere here, I'm not, but I, I think it's something to, to look into and to build that culture so that we can go ahead and, and help these guys execute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think, I don't know that you need a committee to do that. I think it's up to these guys here and us that are out there. If we see something, regardless, whether it's like these people said, dumping garbage or having farted or whatever, you send us, get on that cell phone and call us. Doesn't need to be a group or a committee, give us a call.
Right, just being involved, being involved. Thank you, Ron. Uh, is there any, anybody else that'd like to speak or say anything? Okay? None?
Again, Paul Temera for the record. I would like to make a statement that I have had several of these gentlemen back, out at our ranch at night hunting coyotes. We've utilized them out there to, for predator control. So, um, to say that ranchers have a problem with hunters is, is a false statement. It, it's the shitheads that ranchers have a problem with, okay? And we have locks on a lot of our property because people have come in and they have vandalized our property, they have misused our property. So that, that is, that is where most private property owners have a problem with. It is the people that, that misuse it. It is not the responsible hunters that come onto here. So, um, to have people out and controlling coyotes is gonna benefit us. So, um, I, I don't, that is the reason why I'm not strongly opposed to this. Like I said, I'm not in favor of it, but I'm not opposed to it. One thing, Bryce made a statement, I believe he said he thought that a mile distance from private property was sufficient. I'd like to remind you that twenty miles from the railroad is all checkerboard, and every section is a mile square. So if you put a mile from private property restriction on this, it is gonna limit all this checkerboard property, you won't be able to hunt it. I think the two miles from occupied dwelling, a mile from a structure is adequate. I don't think it needs to be private property, cause we own most of the flats across the country mile, it's private property. But somebody could set up, uh, s- a spot there and start calling coyotes and be within our mile of private property and still be on federal ground or whatnot. So, um, I'd like, I, I think the, the mile from private property is maybe too restrictive, so.
Thank you for that, that's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up, Paul. All right, is there any other comments or anybody else that'd like to say anything? Okay, I'll move it back to the commission. Any more from the commission? If not, I'm gonna open it up for a motion. No questions?
No, it puts us in a tough spot, you know, we wanna support both sides.
And then, uh, yes, so, so let's address this before we actually open for, up for a motion. We've already talked about the distance, so Paul, Ron, very good point, whether it being checkerboard, if you do a mile from private property, it's gonna eliminate all that. So we go right back to the, it's two miles distance from any occupied structure, a mile from any structure. You guys still agree with that?
Yes.
All right, well, I am going to, uh, I'm gonna open it up for a motion. Is there a motion anybody'd like to make?
Yes, uh, before I do, I'd just like to say that, uh, I, I don't believe we're in the business to make people's lives any more difficult than they already are, um, listening to Mr. Temera. You know, even though you may be further out than we are here in town, I, I, I do believe, you know, it's, it's frustrating when you hear people trespassing, it's frustrating when you hear people, uh, damaging equipment, damaging, you know, Dennis, you talked about that too, variable drive gets damaged, who, who, who's responsible for that? So it, you know, we, we can only imagine is, is people that live within town, if somebody was to come on our property, shooting or trespassing, how we would deal with it. So, you know, we're not in the, in the business to try to make, you know, your life more stressful, more, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to here to make things better for everybody. So that's, I, I wanted to say that before I make my motion. Also, I, I do, I do believe by getting more lawful hunters out there, uh, more eyes, more boots on the ground, that we're gonna solve a lot more problems. We're not gonna fix every, every illegal hunter out there, every person, uh, who's not following the rules and respecting everybody's private properties and lands, but certainly having more people out there makes me feel more comfortable, so. Um, with that, I would like to, uh, move a motion to approve, uh, the proposed ordinance number two zero two five zero two, amending chapter nine point one six of the Lander County Code entitled Weapons Concerning the Prohibition of the Discharge of Firearms at Night in Section nine point one six point zero one zero, and to hold a additional exception to the list provided in Section nine point one six point zero two zero, to allow the hunting of coyotes, bobcats, and badgers, uh, as well as including, uh, we're gonna have it, kit fox and gray fox, um, at night under certain conditions, including the use of night vision and thermal scopes, safe distance requirement, obtaining permission from property owner on private land, and compliance with all hunting regulations and other matters property related there. With, uh, with the, how do we say this? With the rule of the two-mile resident occupied, no, no, no closer of two miles residence occupied and one mile from any structure. Hopefully I got that right.
Thank you, Lamont. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? All second to motion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Say nay. Okay, so it passes. So, um, I'd like to thank everybody that came in for this item, uh, thank you for being here and your testimony, and, uh, we're gonna take a short recess here, and then we'll get back to it. All right, so we're gonna continue with one point six, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the development agreement between Lander County and Emerald Land Company for parcel map number two four dash zero zero four two filed by Emerald Land Company LLC to split APN zero one one dash zero two zero dash three two, which is a sixty-seven point one five acre parcel into one forty-three thousand five hundred sixty-five square foot parcel, one forty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-two square foot parcel, and one sixty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-two square foot parcel, and a sixty-one point seven three acre remainder parcel with a dedication of one thousand three hundred nine linear feet of right-of-way for Emerald Lane in an A-one, one acre agricultural district. The subject property is located on the north side of Yellow Brick Road, approximately eight hundred eighty-three feet east of the intersection of Twenty-Sixth Street and Yellow Brick Road in Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight ninety-two. All right, anybody have any questions on this item? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass one point six.
Okay, uh, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll go to one point seven, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the development agreement between Lander County and Emerald Land Company for parcel number two five dash zero 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 three filed by Emerald Land Company LLC, fifth parcel map to split APN zero one one dash zero two zero dash three two, a sixty-one point seven three acre parcel into a forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight square foot parcel, a forty-four thousand three hundred and thirteen square foot parcel, and a forty-five thousand six hundred and thirteen square foot parcel, and a fifty-eight point one seven acre remainder parcel with a dedication of nineteen thousand sixty-seven square feet of right-of-way for Emerald Court in an A-one, one acre agricultural district. The subject property is located on the north side of Yellow Brick Road, approximately eight hundred eighty-three feet east of the intersection of Twenty-Sixth Street and Yellow Brick Road in Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight ninety-two. Anybody have any questions on that? If not, we'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve, that's read on record.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, motion and, uh, seconded by Alicia. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to one point eight, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the development agreement between Lander County and Emerald Land Company for parcel number two five dash zero 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 four filed by Emerald Land Company LLC, sixth parcel map to split APN zero one one dash zero two zero dash three two, a fifty-eight point one seven acre parcel into a sixty-eight thousand one hundred and eleven square foot parcel, a sixty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-eight square parcel, a sixty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-six square foot parcel, and a fifty-three point four eight acre remainder parcel in an A-one, one acre agricultural district. The subject property is located on the north side of Yellow Brick Road, approximately eight hundred and eighty-three feet east of the intersection of the Twenty-Sixth Street and Yellow Brick Road in Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight ninety-two. Are there any questions? If not, we'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass one point eight.
We have a motion, is there a second? Yeah, motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to one point nine, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the development agreement between Lander County and Emerald Land Company for parcel number two five dash zero 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 five filed by Emerald Land Company LLC, seventh parcel map to split APN zero one one dash zero two zero dash three two, a fifty-three point four acre parcel into a forty-six thousand three hundred twenty-eight square foot parcel, a forty-six thousand three hundred seventy-seven square foot parcel, and a sixty-eight thousand three hundred sixteen square foot parcel, as well as a forty-nine point seven eight acre remainder parcel in an A-one, one acre agricultural district. The subject property is located on the north side of Yellow Brick Road, approximately eight hundred eighty-three feet east of the intersection of the Twenty-Sixth Street and Yellow Brick Road in Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight ninety-two. Any questions? If not, we'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass one point nine.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Motion and second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll go to one point one zero, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the bid award for Lander County West Community Project Phase One and Two PWP LA dash two zero two five dash two two eight, the demolition and replacement of approximately eleven thousand square yards of asphaltic concrete pavement, along with the removal and reconstruction of existing curb, gutter, and sidewalk to meet current standards. The project also encompasses the replacement of existing water lines and domestic lateral to, laterals to improve service reliability. Additional site enhancements will involve driveway tie-ins, landscaping restoration, and fencing replacement as necessary, located at West Antelope and East Antelope Drive in Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight ninety-two. One H, uh, Honeywell Construction Company, Inc., base bid forty, uh, four million nine hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-five cents. This is recommended for approval with the bid alternative of three hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, and two hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents for a total bid amount not to exceed five million six hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred nine dollars and seventy cents. All right, so does anybody have any questions on this one? Okay?
The only bidder? That was the only one, okay. And on the, uh, alternate bids, what is that for?
So, um, this project is, um, a four-base project. That the commission has been taking action on for a couple of years. It was to go out to bid last year, then it was paused. And so, uh, the previous commission action actually directed the project team to develop fiber optic lines, um, as kind of a, an approach going forward, so that we could install dry conduit on a lot of our projects that were tearing up the road, and that dry conduit would then facilitate future fiber optic expansion into our rural communities. And so, to answer your question shortly, it was an initiative developed by the county commissioners to install dry conduit in all of our projects moving forward as kind of an approach to, again, to, to facilitate future fiber optic internet connectivity in these areas. Kind of fast forward to today, that, um, you're seeing in some of your commun, in some of your rural, uh, neighborhoods, there's some grant funding being applied from the federal government, and you're seeing some of that fiber optic installation occurring. And so they're able to actually do directional bore drilling in some of those areas that don't really need some of this dry conduit. So, uh, from my opinion, um, I would actually not, um, do the bid alternates and not perform the fiber optic conduit unless you folks feel it's necessary. Kind of with this directional bore drilling and seeing how they're doing it in these existing neighborhoods, they're able to come behind the sidewalks, directional bore drill where they need to, and not really impact our roadways. The, kind of the downfall to that is a lot of these directional bore drills are not really at the depth that we would prefer. And so sometimes what I'm seeing in other communities I work is, um, you know, we come do a road rehabilitation project, some of these fiber optics are only maybe six, eight, ten inches below grade. We try not to hit them, but every now and again, we might pull a few up. And so that's kind of the, um, the effect of that. But I think it'd be in your budgetary best interest to see if the federal government's gonna continue to allow some of this grant funding in order to get some of this fiber optic installation installed for the county, and save about a half a million dollars on this dry conduit component.
And would this tie in with anything else, or is this the first section that we're doing this on? How much of it have we done in the past?
So this is gonna be, um, new, and the reason we picked this section is because Envy Energy is coming in, they've actually already started their project. And so we're trying to work in, you know, conjunction with them for some of their placement of some of their new utilities that are going in as well. That's why we picked this section to, to move on first.
Is there a hub to be able to tie into close?
Are you talking, so you're talking...
Right, the fiber optics, right.
Um, not currently, uh, the, the governor's office has been down here and met with us a few times on some of the, on the fiber, and they call it the last mile connections. So they will be coming into our library, senior center, you know, a few places, but we don't have the conduit from there to attach to these outer lying areas where we're, we're currently at. If we did put the conduit in ourselves, one advantage is, is then we could do some sort of agreement with, uh, any fiber optic that did come to town, where maybe we could, you know, charge them or get a discount for, um, them using our conduit to put their infrastructure in. So that is one side of, of installing this that would be beneficial, um, but it's a half a million dollars, and who knows when it will see any, any sort of...
I was just gonna say, you know, years ago when we did our house, we ran C-CAT five throughout our entire house, so that we would have internet. What a waste of time. And that could very well be what's gonna happen with this conduit. Because by the time we get this conduit in, things will change so much.
And to, but, uh, to answer your question, the hub, or what they call a POP, point of, uh, POC, I think is point of connection, the, the, the main one that I'm aware of is right there near the hospital.
So it's quite a ways away.
Yeah, it's right there at the civic center. That's, that's our, that's our main hub.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And then this project, just to be aware, so like as the county manager outlined, uh, this project is conjunction with an Envy Energy component, so they're rehabilitating east and west antelopes electrical infrastructure. And so, uh, the phase two of this project, which you're approving today, if you approve, um, is, is imperative, because it's gonna allow the crews to work out of the way of this Envy Energy project that's going on on east and west antelope. So phase two allows to do waterline infrastructure in another area, to kind of not have contractors conflicting. And kind of how the, this is going is, east and west antelope, phase one is to rehabilitate the roads, the sidewalks, the water infrastructure. Phase two is to kind of get ahead of that and do the waterline only, and then if the commission and, and administration approve, the next step would be to then do the road and the sidewalks on the phase two infrastructure, and then start to do some waterline into phase three. The entire project for the West Community Project is to rehabilitate all of the west side of town, that would go basically beyond the, uh, the church there, and... side of town, that would go basically beyond the, uh, the church there, and come up towards like the BLM, uh, trailers that are in that area, and like some of that Elquist Drive, and coming further to the south, ultimately very near the museum, is kind of the total Phase Four development that we've already completed the design for.
This is part of that McCoy Co property, right? The old trailer parks that they put in back when the mine was.
Yes.
Echo Bay.
Yeah.
Yeah, or Echo Bay, I mean, sorry.
Echo Bay, yeah.
Echo Bay, sorry.
So all those designs have basically already been developed.
Yeah, I drove out there today, it needs, yeah, it's, it needs, yes.
Our, our water and sewer guys, it's driving them nuts, they're, we have leaks popping up full-time, we have, you know, community members that aren't very happy because their, you know, street's soggy and wet, you, you know, so, it, these, these are needed projects, we're also replacing some of that concrete asbestos pipe. Um, it's not, it, it doesn't have to be replaced, but every chance you get the.
Yeah, the orange perk, yeah.
Yep, so, um, there's a few benefits to this.
Another benefit would be new street signs, there's a lot of them missing and a bunch of them you can't see, as I drove around today looking for Antelope Road.
All right, are there any other questions from the board? All right, I'll hear a motion.
Okay, I motion that we, um, approve the bid for Lander County West Community Plan Projects, One and Two, um, PW, LA, twenty twenty-five dash two oh two eight, the demolition and replacement of approximately eleven hundred square yards of asphalt concrete pavement, along with the removal and reconstruction of the existing curb, gutter, and sidewalks to meet current standards. The project will also encompass the replacement of existing water lines and domestic laterals to improve service reliability. Additional site enhancements will, will include the driveway tie-ins, landscape restoration, and fencing replacements as necessary located on West and East Antelope Drive in Battle Mountain. I do not approve the alternate bids.
Well, that, is that what your motion?
Yeah, that we leave the alternate bids off.
Yeah. That was his recommendation, so if that's what you want to state your motion as, then yes, that would be correct.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Just, just for the record, we might wanna put a not to exceed amount of.
Oh, sorry, sorry, not to exceed, where'd that go? Honeywell, okay, four million nine hundred. A million, four, uh, to, uh, not to exceed five million?
No, four million.
Or four million?
Four million nine hundred and ninety-one.
Four hundred, uh, five, four million nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, four million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay, good, well, thank you.
Our motion, yeah, that's reflected. And this is the person, who seconded it?
I did.
You concur?
I do.
Okay, everybody in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
We can take that half a million dollars and put it on this more sidewalk somewhere else.
Okay, now we'll move to one point one one, for information only presentation by the planning coordinator on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Business Improvement Pro, Program Projects.
Do I just plug this in?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners, uh, I'll make this quick, I know we're probably burned out for meetings after yesterday and today. Um, so I just wanna give you a quick update on our business improvement projects, where they're at, uh, and kind of the before and after effects. Uh, so this is the Cozy Mountain Motel, they were approved for ten thousand dollars, uh, for a mural, uh, here you can see a before and after. Um, the covered wagon, uh, they were approved for fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, for a trailer park cleanup, they have been partially reimbursed, uh, but the project is not complete yet. Uh, you can see some, some cleanup has been done, but they are still waiting on installation of a six-foot, uh, vinyl fence. Um, I have been in contact with the applicant, she will be submitting for an extension, um, there, have a parcel map in process, uh, to divide this property, um, so once they figure out where the property line in is, that fence will go in. Uh, here's insurance and more, uh, they've, their project is fully complete, um, and they've been reimbursed, uh, the project was for six thousand one hundred and nine dollars and seventy-four cents, they installed new windows, um, and a faux facade, uh, so you can see the rocks underneath the windows, um, and there's completion of that one. Uh, Comfort Inn, they were approved for twenty-five thousand dollars for a water feature and a fire pit, uh, they're partially reimbursed, I talked to the applicant this morning, um, they have some electrical work still left to do, um, and then they will submitting, be submitting for final reimbursement, uh, so here you can see, uh, before, um, and then a couple of in progress, and here is a final.
Yes.
Final product. Uh, Midway Market, um, they were approved for twenty-five thousand dollars for parking lot paving, uh, there's been no progress, uh, as of today, I haven't been in contact with the applicant, um, so they have, uh, still a little bit more time, but I'm assuming they're waiting for nicer weather. Uh, so a summary, total of five projects were approved for eighty thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents, one project is fully complete, uh, forty-six thousand dollar, forty-six, forty-six thousand thirty-eight dollars has been requested for reimbursement, uh, with pending thirty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents remaining, um, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
So you feel it's been a very successful project, and us rolling the money over again this year for more projects is definitely worth it?
I think so, just the fact that we got eighty thousand dollars worth of projects, and we only had fifty thousand dollars budgeted, I think that, that speaks a lot, um, and that we have, you know, interest in the program, um, and people are participating, um, and they're, you know, taking advantage of those funds.
Uh, the businesses that have taken advantage of the program, how long do they have to utilize what they have before they lose it?
Um, so the way that we have written in the guidelines right now is, they have nine months from either the issuance of their building permit, or the day that they sign their participation agreement.
Okay, nine months, okay.
And we were just talking about this back there, um, Shelby's gonna come back in front of us and, and make a few changes for us to approve.
Yeah, so I would like to bring back the guidelines to you guys to get your input, um, you know, we've ran into a couple of, uh, issues where you, you guys think we can improve, uh, where I as the administrator, you know, I do all the paperwork and all of that stuff, uh, just where we can improve and things that we wanna see different.
Okay, thank you. That's, there's no further questions, that was a great, uh, presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to two point one, correspondence reports, futures into items, uh, we do wanna do, is everybody in agreement, they wanna, uh, try to tackle this tri-county agreement? Uh, with, uh, Spurgeon and.
Yeah, I do. Yeah. Since we don't actually have a contract in place, I think we should.
Yeah, so maybe, and then, uh, we'll put that on the April twenty-fourth, uh, agenda, as well, did we wanna tackle the Austin Museum issue, Dee?
Yes, on the twenty-fourth, yeah, 'cause I won't be here on the tenth, I'll be on the phone on the tenth.
All right, Austin Museum, I apologize, I'm not.
Well, I, I had mentioned that I would like to see the Austin Museum move into the same status as the Battle Mountain Museum, yeah, that's it, nothing serious, just so that we don't have to apply for a grant every year, and.
Yeah, just create a contract.
Right.
Um, is there anything else under correspondence reports or future agenda items?
I do, I had a gentleman, um, come see me the other day, and he had a really good valid point, he was talking about when he was watching the meetings on YouTube, um, that he's hard of hearing, so he doesn't come in much, and he said that he likes to watch them, but certain agenda items he likes to watch, so he asked if there was a way we could put the agenda items up as we're going, and he set a whiteboard, and I said a whiteboard's not gonna work, but I, I got to thinking about this, and like, kind of what they have at the DMVs, maybe we could put a little thing on the wall, that as you go through the agenda items, you could push the button and go to two point one or whatever, I, I don't know if that'd work, but it's just a suggestion, and.
Is that something we can do with our system?
Can they see that on the video, though?
When they're videoing that. Oh, you want it to go to the video?
Yeah, he's watching from home.
Maybe like, do a split screen or something.
Well, we can put it on the D, but then that takes away the camera from.
From the speaker.
What's going on in here.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, maybe we could just like, I mean, I don't know if there was something right behind here.
Nathan, Nathan's come in several times with the system that we have the other day, I did put it up there, so on the go-to, if they're watching the go-to, the problem is, is the video that the clerk posts is not my.
Yeah, I think he's watching the YouTube one after.
Oh, I see.
He's watching the YouTube after.
If there's a presentation, then it's on there, like, they can see that when they're watching it, but otherwise, it's whoever is talking.
Well, what we could do with this person is just say, they could be put on their, uh, we could email them a, a copy of our agenda.
Well, the other thing, if they, if they have a copy of our newsletter, we post our agenda in there, and if they scroll through it, they can click on any of these, just like you guys can on yours, and it pulls up the, the item and the backup.
Yeah, I, what he's saying is, and I understood what he was saying, 'cause in the past, when I was just a community member, and I'd go through it, and you wanna see like, item five, you don't wanna watch one through four, so he could.
What you can do also is, when you're watching things on YouTube, if there's, I believe there's a, a transcription tab you can press, I mean, it's not on a, it's an AI transcription, but you can still kind of see, uh, you know, as the video's playing, you can kind of look ahead where, during the transcription.
The clerk's office has the timestamping capability, um, but they're still, I believe, Peggy, you guys are gonna have time in here, they're still working on getting the timestamping, right, 'cause they just figured out how to use all of that, but they can go in and timestamp their recording per item now.
Okay.
How about we, uh, so we don't get into discussion here, how about we try to find some solutions and come back, you guys.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, great, okay, any more under correspondence reports or future agenda items? Okay, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only, is there any public comments? Okay, your motion for there?
I'll move.
Second? All in favor.
Oh, I, I have one. I need the computer here for the non-agendized item.
Yes, for public comment, non-agendized items, yes.
Thank you, yes. Um, I was, my name's Danny Taylor, for the record, um, and I was just inquiring about the cleaning up of the abandoned houses, um, especially on Bastion Road, um, I have, within a hundred yard radius of me, I have four abandoned houses, um, one is county-owned, one has been, excuse me, cleaned up, um, I understand that the county owned one, that they don't know what legally they can do with it yet, um, so I was just curious about where we were at on that, because it's becoming a safety issue for my family and I.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we, we've noted it, because we can't have discussion on the item, but our, our county manager's shaking his head, he's noted it, and he'll probably look into it and be reaching out to you.
We, we have been looking to it. If, if you don't mind, either I, um, if you could type in your number, or if you can reach out to my office, that would be, that would be wonderful, so we can, uh, so we can talk off the record here on it, but we, we are looking into it, our district attorney has responded to a couple of our emails on that, and, uh, we do have some things we're working forward with.
Cool, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any further public, uh, comment on non-agenda items only? All right, so we have a motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.